I'll call the June 18 school committee meeting to order. Tonight's agenda will follow, as will be as follows, excuse me. We'll have a donation from Samantha's Harvest. We'll then have the teacher recognition section, which is always one of our favorite meetings of the year. And we will then have the routine business and then we'll discuss the superintendent's evaluation. So Lisa, did you want to come up?
I think so.
I guess over there.
This is very formal. Lisa Gibbs, Precinct 7. I just wanted to say on behalf of the board of directors and honorary board and officers at Samantha's Harvest, we're very pleased to come before you again to make a donation to Reading Public Schools. We are very proud that this year our board decided to donate the lion's share of what we earned in order to help the high school realize their vision of a vocational program. So we are buying, purchasing a lot of things for the program, which I think is outlined in your packet. And as well, we will be purchasing a stove, dishwasher, and a hood to go in room 105, where we understand is where the vocational program will take place with all the classes. And we're just very happy and proud to be able to do this for this one time, this big sum of money set aside for whatever needs the programming has. So we hope you will accept our donation this evening and probably will be coming. We haven't yet purchased those big appliances. We'll be doing that and coming before you again to make that donation. So I don't know if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Do you want to say anything?
Yeah, we are in room 105 and very excited.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're more than welcome. Any questions? Sorry, let me. I'll get the most. Move to accept the donation in the amount of $975.22 to be used to support the Crossroads Program Vocational Component. Second.
Second.
I just have a question.
Yes.
Is it possible to accept the donation for the stove, the dishwasher, and the hood tonight as well? That way they don't have to come back in July?
I will amend the motion to include the donation of the stove, the dishwasher, and the hood. Is that all of it?
Yep. All of them in favor of the motion? Five zero. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Five zero. Dr. Doherty, teacher recognition.
Yes, thank you. This is, and I know it's one of the committee's favorite evenings of the year. It's also one of our favorite evenings of the year where we get to celebrate milestones of our dedicated and talented staff. Seventy-nine teachers this year reached, staff members, not just teachers, but staff members, reached different milestones, which include, for teachers, reaching professional teaching status, which happens after three years. And also for milestones of 10 years, 20 years, 30 years. And also we have some retirements this evening as well. So I'm going to turn it over to Jen Bovee, our human resources administrator, who has done an enormous amount of work organizing this evening. And she's going to coordinate the rest of this piece of the presentation. So Jen.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much again for being here. I just want to again reiterate what John stated about this being such a great night for us to be able to honor all of these milestones that you're reaching. It really is a great thing to end the year off with. So with that being said, we're going to get moving along. And we're going to start off with Heather Leonard, the principal for Barrows Elementary School.
Thanks, Jen. Thank you for letting us join you school committee to celebrate these outstanding educators. This year, my milestones are all three teachers receiving professional teacher status, which is an awesome thing to bring high-quality teachers into our district and that they're engaged and connected and excited to stay with us. So first is Julie Gilchrist, who's a third grade teacher at Barrows Elementary. Next is Bethany Granath, who is a kindergarten teacher at Barrows Elementary, both who are unable to come this evening, but we celebrate their achievement. And third, I'd like to bring up Andrew Hurley, who's a fifth grade teacher at Barrows Elementary achieving professional status tonight. Thank you.
All right. And next, we're going to be presenting for Wood End Elementary School, and we have Jackie Palusi.
Hello. I'm excited to be here for Wood End. We're going to start off with the 20 years of service. So we have Jane Roberts, our kindergarten teacher. Next, we have our professional status. We have two staff members receiving professional status. So Chris Bauer, our PE teacher, could not be here tonight. And we also have Lisa Breed, our school psychologist. And then last, we do have one retirement. And I'm so happy that I get to be here because she's part of my team at Wood End. Debbie Leahy is retiring after 40 years as a speech pathologist, 24 of them in Reading Public Schools.
Okay. And next, we're going to have Principal Sarah Levat come up to present for Killam Elementary School.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. I have the privilege of honoring three individuals at Killam who've achieved 10 years of service here in the Reading Public Schools. If I'm not mistaken, unfortunately, none of them are able to make it this evening. But we are honoring Nina Balf, who's a current second grade teacher, Kristen Pagararo, who's a current first grade teacher, and Christine Chuh, kindergarten para educator, excuse me. Three of them, and I'll make sure they receive this award. Thank you.
And next, we're going to bring up Principal Julia Hendricks for Birch Meadow Elementary School.
Good evening, everybody. We have four staff members here from Birch Meadow this evening who have reached milestones. Elizabeth Connery has worked for 10 years in the Reading Public Schools as a para educator. And then we have Peggy Costello, our school nurse, who has also worked for 10 years in the Reading Public Schools. And I am announcing two teachers who have achieved professional teacher status this year in Reading. Carrie Anne Zarico, special educator. And Leisha Turner, kindergarten teacher.
Next, we're going to have Principal Lisa Marie Ippolito come up for Joshua Eaton Elementary School.
Thank you for having us here this evening. Joshua Eaton has the privilege of having several staff members who have reached milestones in their educational process. So I'd like to start off with achieving 10 years Jessica Cornetta and Elizabeth Hurley. I don't think either one of them are here this evening. But I also have the amazing Amy Greco, who is our school secretary. Next, we have staff member Susie Libby, who's a grade-two teacher at Joshua Eaton, who is unable to be here this evening. But congratulations to Susie. We are also fortunate enough to have four staff members to achieve professional teaching status. Adam DeRosa, who's grade five at Joshua Eaton, Sandy Emery, grade four, Kelly Hardeman, grade five, and with us this evening is Brittany Conick, grade three. We are also sad, but very thrilled. We have two retirees that we celebrated last week, one with a party and this morning another one with a breakfast. So we have Maureen Lynch, who is retiring at the end of this school year. She's unable to be with us this evening, but congratulations to Maureen. And then how else could it be? Jill Mayberry. Not only is she retiring, but she's also celebrating 30 years. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So next, I want to bring up Principal Rochelle Shanklin to present for Parker Elementary School. Excuse me, Parker Middle School. Transitions are always tough.
So at Parker Middle School, we have three teachers who have 10 years or achieving 10 years this year. So we have, with us tonight, we have Julie Merrill. She is. In that 10 years, she has taught sixth grade English and she has also been a language-based program teacher. Also for 10 years, we have, which they couldn't be with us tonight, I don't believe, Brian James, who is an eighth grade English teacher, and Jamie Walsh, who is a seventh and eighth grade math teacher. And we have a teacher from Parker Middle School tonight celebrating 20 years. So Bridget Roden is our speech and language pathologist. Come on up, Bridget. We have five teachers at Parker who have achieved professional status. We have one of them with us tonight. So Kim Moreau has achieved professional status. Come on up. Kim is, she is a Learning Center teacher, as well as she has been doing some long-term leaves in our language-based program as well. Also receiving professional status this year is Kim Fernazani. She's our school psychologist. Allison Sanchez, who's a grade-six language-based program teacher. Nicholas Trapani, who's a seventh and eighth grade math teacher, and Jessica Dockerty, who has taught sixth grade English, seventh grade English, and is now currently teaching seventh grade science for us. Congratulations.
All right. Next, I want to bring up Principal Sarah Machot to present for Coolidge Middle School.
Thank you. There's a lot to celebrate at Coolidge today, so I'll be up here for a few minutes. I do love this evening, so thank you for having us. And it is a nice bookend for the year. And I just the other day found my clipping from three years ago of our current professional teacher status from their first day when we were at the school committee three years ago. So that was a nice memory, too. So tonight, we are celebrating teachers who have been here for 10 years. And I would like to acknowledge Michael Bernard, Kelsey Finnegan, Mary Beth Heatherton, and Christian Heisinga, who were not able to be here tonight, but we want to congratulate all of them. One teacher is here tonight. It's Peg Gilbert, and we will see her two times. So come on up. I'm going to make you come up twice. Ten-year conference. I'll see you again in a minute. Reaching professional teacher status, we have with us tonight Daniel Cody, who's a seventh and eighth grade science teacher. We have, I'm going to blossom my place. We have Nicole Pendleton, who's with us here tonight. And also receiving professional teacher status but unable to be here tonight, Eric Castriano. Nicole, by the way, is a teacher in our Crossroads Program. Eric Castriano, who's a Learning Center teacher. Janelle Q. V., seventh and eighth grade math. And Anna Wentland, who is our music teacher and whose students are actually about to start a theater production from their theater class across the way at Coolidge, so couldn't be here tonight. But congratulations to all of them as well. And we have two retirees joining us tonight who we were able to celebrate last week in a very special gathering with our staff. And it is very hard to see people leave who have made such a tremendous impact in our building, and I want to thank them from the bottom of my heart. And I will start with Marsha Grant, who's our technology integration specialist, who's been in the district for 24 years and at Coolidge for 12 years. And I think you're supposed to stay up for a picture, so I'm kind of holding on to your... I wasn't going to let you go anywhere. Oh, yeah, she can, we can get her up here. Yeah, you stay here. All right. And then next, Peg Gilbert, who has been at Coolidge also for 10 years.
Don't stand behind the podium.
Great. And I get the pleasure of also giving a 20-year milestone for Beau Halloran, who is a custodian here at Coolidge, who I don't see him here tonight, but I will have the honor of giving this to him when I see him tomorrow. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. And next, I'm going to have Director Kelly Boswick come up to present for Rise Preschool.
Good evening. I would like to recognize Maureen Delaginos for 10 years of service. And Mary Sage for professional teaching status. And she's wearing a cross, too.
And next, I'm going to have Director Carolyn Wilson make her way over here to present for pupil services.
I have one person to recognize, which is Kelly Decato, for 10 years of service. She's been, she's currently a team chair, but has also worked as a special ed teacher, and we are very thankful for your service.
Next, I would like to welcome up Director Kristen Morello to present for our food services department.
Thanks, Jen. Thank you very much for having us here tonight. We have several people to honor, but only one is here, so we'll do her first. I'd like to congratulate Nancy Learned, who works at Reading Memorial High School in the kitchen, and she has 10 years with us. So congratulations, Nancy. We also have Diane Feeley from the Parker Middle School celebrating 10 years, Muriel Hall, who celebrated 10 years and finished at the Killam. But interestingly, she had left and then come back, and now she retired before the end of the year. Suzanne Joss from the Parker Middle School, also with 10 years. And Laura O'Brien from the Killam Elementary School for 10 years. Hillary McCarthy and Michelle McCarthy, not related, both 20 years at the Coolidge Middle School. And my right arm, Jerry Donahue, my secretary, 20 years with the school system. Thank you.
And next, I'm going to have Dr. Doherty come up to present for Reading Memorial High School, as well as for our central office. And we have one other facilities member who we're going to recognize.
Thank you. Thanks, Jen. So I would like to recognize first our Reading Memorial High School for 10 years, Jennifer Keeny. I don't believe she is here this evening. For 20 years, Amy Diamond. Elena Napoli. Paula Von Ue. For 30 years, Bob Mooney. And I know this person's here because I saw her. 35 years, Kristin Killian. Those receiving, well, actually, wait a minute. I've got one more here somewhere. Oh, there he is. Also for 20 years, because he was down in another column, also for 20 years, Joe LaVita, who is a school custodian here at Reading Memorial High School. For professional teacher status, Christina Clausen, Megan Howey, Bristol Lieber, Ally Lynch, Andrew Murphy, and Colleen Griffin-Rollan. Colleen, is she here? Is she? It's okay.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Ian, we have one central office staff member who has reached the 20-year milestone, and that is our administrative assistant for teaching and learning, Laurie Miller.
Thank you. And, you know, again, congratulations to those that reached milestones and were happy. Many are still continuing. And best of luck for those who are retiring. You earned it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take a two-minute recess.
Meeting back to order. So, we'll go back... We're a little ahead of schedule, but we'll go back and start with reports. So, if anyone has any reports. Ms. Barowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I actually have three, so I'll try to be... I'll try to move quickly. But I guess we're ahead of schedule, so maybe I'll take my time. I wanted to inform the committee, this is a slightly unusual report, but last week I had the opportunity to attend a workshop that was co-hosted by William James College and Teachers 21 on Behavioral Health, Social-Empotional Learning, and Leadership in Schools. And the keynote speaker had some information that I found so relevant to the work that we've done over the last couple of years and the work we're doing moving forward, that I really did want to share it with the committee and also the administration. So, the keynote speaker was Dr. Robert Franks. He's the president and CEO of Judge Baker Children's Center. And he was really talking about mental health support in school and how we help kids be mentally healthy. And he talked about preventative factors, risk factors, and resilience. And he said, "There's actually a lot a school community can do to improve resilience in our students, to help them achieve higher levels of mental health." And they included social... I'm sorry, school connectedness. And I was struck by the work we've done to see data-proven improvements in kids being connected to adults in buildings. So, we have the data to prove we're doing that work. So, that was wonderful to hear. Monitoring and improving student attendance. We've heard presentations this year by principals who are doing that work in their schools and seeing data... I keep saying data, but really provable improvement in that area. Active PTOs. I think we can all agree, we have very active PTOs in Reading. Positive school climates, where all the adults in the building, parents, teachers, administrators are pulling together and putting the kids first. The proportion of college-bound students having just attended high school graduation. We undoubtedly have a very, very high percentage of kids going on to college. And the last one was policies governing violence, cigarettes, and drug use. And I know over the last several years, this committee has done a lot of work on policies in collaboration with the Board of Sledman, with the RACASA, to really make sure that our policies are supporting kids with those issues when they come up. So, I just wanted to share that. I was really heartened. I sat there going, "We're doing that? We're doing that? We've got... We're really in good shape." I think that the work we've done on social-emotional learning in our district has put us ahead of the curve. The statistics on anxiety and depression, particularly for young people, that's happening younger, it's happening at a higher rate. This is the work we can be doing to improve that. So, I just wanted to share with the committee that if anyone is interested in this topic, I oodles more information. It was really, really great workshop. My other reports are as follows. The CPAC met... I'm so sorry, I can't find my report. All right, I'll do it from memory. The CPAC met last week. Ms. Wilson, I understand, is going to talk about a few things in terms of some personnel changes and the Parker consultation on the Language-Based Learning Disability Program there. So, I'll let her take that. It was a very small meeting, but Sarah McLaughlin is committed to continuing her work with the CPAC next year. She's already working on a calendar for next year. Elections will happen next fall, and she's very interested, and I agree with her, I'm very interested, in increasing attendance at the meetings, increasing engagement, getting some new leadership on the board. So, there's a lot of positive energy around the CPAC. It was a really productive meeting, and I'm just really looking forward to next year. They are hoping to have a meeting this summer. So, I should be able to report back on that as we get there. And the last update is from the Reading 375th Anniversary Committee. They did have a trivia event very recently that was absolutely fantastic. It was a very effective fundraiser and a lot of fun. And I'm happy to report that they are planning on doing another one this fall. And if you haven't gone, you really should. It is a fun, fun evening. So, this group is working over the next year to have these fundraisers, to raise money, to host a series of events in the late spring, early June timeframe of 2019. And there's going to be a bunch of events. They definitely want school involvement, so they'll be working with the administration to figure out how each school can celebrate the anniversary over town. And the final comment on that one is July 3rd, the night of July 3rd, so 4th of July Eve. They're having a movie showing at Memorial Park, so an outdoor movie showing. It'll be a really fun way to kick us to attend that.
What's the movie?
They either haven't picked it yet, or they haven't told me. I don't know which one. It's a secret. The movie is a secret. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Linda?
I'm assuming you'll do the RACASA. So, I just wanted to let people know that the Reading embraces diversity. It's a community action group aimed at promoting communication and understanding across lines of difference. They had a booth at the Friends and Family Day on Saturday, and many families visited. There was a lot of discussion of the escalation of the antisemitism expressed through swastikas drawn on town and school buildings, as well as the current incident at Parker Middle School that included words, alarming words as well. Red is meeting right now at the UCC Church on the lower level, 25 Woburn Street. In case you're interested, there's an accessible entrance. The goal is to welcome individuals of all abilities to participate in all of its events and activities. The agenda tonight includes a discussion related to Pride Month and a possible response to the alarming antisemitic graffiti. You can contact Red via email, readingembracesdiversity@gmail.com, or via the Facebook page. Upcoming events include the Kindness Rocks Garden, which is a collaboration with the Reading Public Library. And that's going to be on Thursday, July 26th, from 2:00 to 8:00 in the studio at the library. So, thank you.
I would just like to quick report on Reading Friends and Family Day and thank members of the school committee, Mr. Bovin, Mrs. Barowski, Dr. Doxer, who helped us. I left double early, so I don't know. Anyway, we went... We had a table. We had families and students stop by and talk to us. Some graduates stopped by, talked to us. It was really interesting to hear how they're doing. And a bunch of families with preschoolers. And it was just great to see the students really excited about the schools that they're going to here in Reading and students that are doing... have graduated and are doing really well. And we're sharing a perspective of basically gratitude and thankfulness for the opportunities they had in Reading. So, I think that was excellent. Appreciate my... the school committee members. Every year, we try to support that event and sort of some of us take turns staffing that table. I realize I was not at the RACASA meeting this last Thursday. RACASA does continue to meet through the summer. I think it's June 25th. Right, we have... We just changed liaison roles, and Mrs.... Dr. Doxer will be the liaison for the school committee. I would just like to say, though, the work that Jean described at William James, one of the really important services that we have through RACASA that's really helping people in our community of all ages, is the Interface Referral Service. And it's really something that many other coalitions in Mystic Valley are also using, and we're really happy to be able to support that. So, hopefully, that's something that, as RACASA works through its own budget issues in the coming year, we'll be able to continue to support.
Yes.
It just occurred to me, I should tell the committee and to the public, to avoid the appearance of a conflict of interest. Until very recently, I was the vice chair of the Board of Directors of Teachers 21, which co-hosted this seminar, so I just wanted to say that.
Mrs. Wilson?
Sure. As Mrs. Barowski mentioned, we did have a CPAC meeting last Monday evening. It was a small meeting. We went through some staffing updates. We talked about the Report Card Working Group, which actually just met Thursday to do some work. And we talked about developing a more regular schedule for the CPAC. The proposal is to do it on the nights we don't have school committee, so that it's once a month on a Monday night and would allow for consistency. And we also discussed that I might offer office hours prior to that to have opportunities for parents to meet with me. The other two big announcements is that we do have our program review of the BRIDGE program at Parker. Last week, we rolled it out. We shared with the staff, met with the staff to get their feedback, and then we had an open session for parents. And then we have now posted it on the Student Services website. The goal would be to more formally present that in the fall. We discussed it at CPAC, and there was agreement from CPAC, as well as talking with the administration at Parker, that this was just a preliminary review with the most relevant stakeholders. And then, come the fall, we'll delve more into it with the community and others on that. So, the other update is that we have hired an Assistant Director of Student Services, who will be Allison Wright. Allison has been the team chair at Parker Middle School, and she's taken on some additional responsibilities, and we're excited to have her transition into that role. So, we'll be looking to fill her role as team chair at Parker. And we do have a couple other vacancies in team chair, and as those are filled, I'll announce those to the committee.
Thank you. Dr. Darty?
Thank you. I have one announcement. We also had a principal hire last week. I'm pleased to announce that Beth Levitt has been appointed as the next principal of the Barrows Elementary School. She's going to begin on July 1st. Ms. Levitt is currently a Grade II teacher and Science, Technology, Engineering Curriculum Specialist at the E. Ethel Little School in North Reading. She has a master's degree in education and moderate special needs from Framingham State College and a bachelor of arts in child development from Connecticut College. She also recently completed a very rigorous administrative licensure program, which is fairly new with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts called the PALS, which is a lot of performance-based assessments that they have to do now, as well as 500-hour practicum, which is an increase of 200 hours from a few years ago with the old licensure system. I would like to thank the entire screening committee, who was part of that process. We had four very strong finalists. And I also like to thank everyone that was part of the open-mic community session and all of the staff... site visit and staff open-mic session. What was really great about the whole day on the site visit was we had different classes of students ask questions of the candidates. At each... We had four different classes, Grade III, Grade IV, ask questions. And I'll tell you, some of those questions were tougher than what the screening committee had asked. So, it was really great to see that this is truly a community effort in, you know, this process. So, I really appreciate... And we had a really good attendance at the community open mic as well. So, and I said earlier, Ms. Levitt will begin on July 1st. I'm on board. So, thank you.
Okay. Want to do the budget transfer discussion?
Yes. So, included within the packet is just a quick update from the update that we provided on May 4th. So, we are still trending in line with where we were, and as we had talked about at that time, we would continue to monitor the balance, especially within administration. So, at this time, we are still projecting a surplus, so we would like to request that the school committee approve a transfer out of the administration cost center back into the regular day cost center, which is where we had originally done the transfer from, which we had said, if we were not able to fill the positions, we would then transfer the money back. The other item is within the district-wide technology. We have been monitoring all of our revolving accounts, and they all are doing well, with the exception of the extracurricular. So, we have been monitoring that one this year. And even with the increases in the fees, we have seen a decrease in the student involvement, as well as a decrease in revenues that we brought in from the shows. So, we are now meeting monthly with the various people involved in it to look at... see what might be causing some of that. So, upon reviewing the balances, we are requesting that we decrease the offset by $20,000 this year. We are able to contain that within the district-wide technology. I mean, the district-wide cost center, so we're not asking for any transfers. So, we felt comfortable through salary savings to be able to handle the decrease in the offset. And we will give a final update once all the books are closed and everything, and that'll be towards the end of summer.
Okay. So, all of a motion first, and then any opening up, any questions?
Move to approve the transfer of $50,000 from the administration cost center to the regular day cost center.
Is there a second?
Second.
Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Gwop?
Yeah, Gail, thank you for another detailed update on our budget. And there are those who may ask about these transfers and have questions about... It seems that every three to four months, we adjust our move funds between cost centers. So, this is one where we... I think we had moved money into administrative before, and now we're moving some back. Could you just give us a little context? People, you know, looking at this from the public may wonder, "Well, why are we doing this?" I will point out, as your memo says in the packet, that it's a very... it's less than half a percent of the total budget, but it's still money largely from public funds. And so, we want to be respectful of the public's interest in understanding why we're making these transfers.
Absolutely. So, earlier in the year, we had requested a transfer as we were starting to look for additional help in the Central Office for the School Business Assistant position. We were unable to find somebody on a temporary basis to come in and fill those hours. And at the time, we had said if we were not able to either increase hours within the staff or bring somebody in, that we would then transfer the money back into regular education, which is where we had requested the transfer from. So, we were not able to fill it. I am happy to report that we did hire somebody for next year for the position that was approved in the budget, and he is starting July 9th, so we're very excited for that. So, we felt it was prudent to return the money back and use it for our curriculum purchases and technology purchases, since we had originally requested it out of regular education.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any other question? All those in favor? Six, zero.
Thank you.
I'll read the motion first. Move to reduce the budgeted offset from the extracurricular revolving account by $20,000 to $30,000 from the original $50,000 budgeted.
Is there a second?
A second.
Gail?
So, for that one, as I mentioned, we have been monitoring the accounts. This was the first year that we had the increase in the fees. We also had looked at some of the shows and originally had felt comfortable with the dollar amounts. We did see overall student fees went down this year. So, I am meeting with two individuals tomorrow to go through the actual student participation, as well as the costs of the shows and the revenue coming in, as we're looking to plan for next year. So, we are... And we do have meetings set up monthly going into next school year to closely monitor to see what the various causes and effects may be, whether it's different shows, timing of shows, whether the increase in the fees had a larger impact than we thought it would. So, we have regular scheduled meetings going forward. What's also for these is we need to look at the ending balance in the revolving account, because often for these, there is the front-loading of expenses before we start to receive the student fees. So, we're not able to bring the revolving account down to a zero balance, because they have to do a lot of the props and the royalties and expenses that come in before the student fees come in.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? All those in favor of the motion? Six, zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
So we're still ahead, about 10 minutes ahead of schedule, or 15 minutes ahead of schedule. We can either keep rolling on here or take a recess.
I have a question.
Yes.
I'm wondering if the superintendent could say something. I know there's an active investigation going on, but I'm wondering if you could say a little something about what happened to Parker.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last part.
Mrs. Stocker's asking if you'd comment on the incident at Parker. She understands there's an active investigation going on, but wondered if you could comment.
So I actually captured this in my newsletter this week. And Ms. Shanklin also captured it in her newsletter and an email that went out right after the incident happened. So there was some graffiti that was found, anti-Semitic graffiti, which included a swatch sticker and a phrase that was a very disparaging phrase at Parker Middle School located in the front vestibule on the brick walls. It was in pencil. The incident was immediately reported to police. The graffiti was removed once the Facility Department was notified, which was shortly My understanding is that the investigation has concluded at this point. What is very discouraging, and I'm also one who was very upset, as well as the staff and the students were upset that this happened, is that both middle schools, and Parker as well, have done a significant amount of work this year on the importance of inclusion and acceptance and the meaning of hateful symbols and phrases. And they will continue to do that work. Some of the things that they've done this year includes the Core Values Program, World of Different Student Leaders Advisory Lessons, student-led assemblies. Dr. Ornstein is coming to visit Parker, as well as Coolidge and the High School, and the curriculum-based activities that they do during their advisory period with Facing History and Ourselves. After each graffiti incident, the principals and teachers have spoken to the students about the graffiti and emphasized their role and power in fostering a safe and inclusive environment. Although the events continue, we have to continue to do the work. We cannot give up. We cannot change the message, because we have to provide a safe and inclusive environment for all of our students. And that's the bottom line. And that is going to continue to be the focus. What I did put in my newsletter, and I know that Ms. Shanklin did as well, is that the Anti-Defamation League, who we have worked very closely with on this incident as well as other incidents, has a whole series of resources on their webpage on how parents can use these, as well as current events that are happening all over our country and world. And the link is in the newsletter that I sent out this week. It's on the ADL.org webpage, and there are several resources there. Obviously, we're not happy with this. Last year, we ended the year with a graffiti incident, and this year, we are as well. So it's a little discouraging and disappointing with all the work and the emphasis that we've had on it this year that this continues, but we certainly will not give up.
Thank you.
Yes.
Just a question, Dr. Doherty. The buildings, all of our buildings are public-use buildings, community-use buildings?
Yes.
So you mentioned links on our webpage, but I was wondering if there's an appropriate place on the town website through the H-RAC potentially that those same links should be posted and perhaps, and I am actually the new liaison to H-RAC, so I can certainly
So I think, yeah.
Bring that up to them. That those same links, obviously, because given that these are public use, we'd like to get this information out to as many people as possible who come in our buildings.
Yes.
I actually have two more questions. I really appreciate the research that you've done, Dr. Doherty, reaching out to the ADL. When I last spoke to you, you had been looking through Southern Poverty Law Center and also talking to others about how to best handle the situation. And I know that you had discussions with the ADL about why specifics about the phrase were not disclosed. And I was wondering if you could just explain, because that's one of the questions that I've been asked. Why is it that they recommend you not specifically talk about or publish the words that were on with the graffiti?
In all the research that I've done on the types of press releases that have been sent on different hate graffiti and symbols across not only Massachusetts but across the country, I've never seen any that get into these specific words. And I'm also talking about racist graffiti, any type. The ADL, we had a conversation with them on Friday. They frowned upon it. I know that if Ms. Shanklin has been asked directly, she has, in full transparency, told people that have asked what it said in terms of parents communicating with her. So it's not that we're not being transparent, we're just, we're taking the guidance and advice from the Anti-Defamation League.
Yes.
And my other question was, you've done a really nice job communicating. Ms. Shanklin wrote right away to the Parker community, and you included these resources in our newsletter, which I really appreciated. And I appreciate that Mrs. Webb talked about H-RAC. Was there a conscious decision not to send it out to the town, or is there rationale around that?
We did. We sent it to the newsletter on Sunday.
The newsletter to the schools?
You mean to the entire community?
Yeah, just asking about that. That's one of the questions.
We did not, no. We did not send it.
Okay. I was just wondering, at what point does something like this?
We've regularly communicated the graffiti incidents to our school community. It's been done on a regular basis.
And the police. I certainly bring that to H-RAC. Thank you.
Okay. At this point, I'd like to have public comment if there is any on something that's not on the agenda for tonight. DeCorm, do you have?
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. I do have two things that are not on the agenda for tonight. The first was a message that was shared with me, or a post that was from the fifth-grade principal, or the elementary school principals, saying that the Bourndale trips are not going to be happening next year, that they're looking for an alternative. It was just a few years ago that my current freshman was, in fact, in front of the school committee, telling what a great time she had at the first year of the first trip when Birch Meadow went, initiating that program. So I certainly hope that the principals are able to find a good replacement. And I'll note that it was really something about the overnight trip, that the longer not just trying to cram as much into the school day, that that Bourndale trip really gave a number of opportunities that aren't available in other circumstances. The other thing that's not on the agenda for tonight, I wanted to ask the school committee to revisit the question of the Assistant Principal-Secretary position at the high school, which even in the restored budget after the override is still being eliminated. And the fallout for that is that the Secretary for the Guidance Department is being bumped out of her position. We had a lot of passionate support for that person by a number of students who came up and spoke very eloquently during the budget discussions. And I don't specifically know who's coming in. I'm sure she would be a good replacement. But I also want to talk about how the Assistant Principal-Secretary is also, just as a position, is an important position, particularly next year, as we have a new principal coming on. I think we'll need perhaps a little more support for that person in the first year, that having extra secretaries in the administration's office at the high school would be very important, at least for that first year. We can consider it. I also noticed with the budget transfers that we saw at a regular day, if we're perhaps able to pre-order for next year, we might find a little bit, if you move the $30,000, or the $50,000 back, the projection would show $80,000 left over projected at the end of this year, if you can pre-purchase and open that up to help support the Assistant Principal-Secretary position. Also, as I walked in to the library here, there's a couple of maps with the admissions of the current senior class into various students. And talking with the guidance director at the high school, mentioned that she really felt that the current secretary of the Guidance Department was very helpful in managing all of the things that are specific, not just to, you know, secretary, okay, answer the phone or respond to letters, but specifically guidance-related activities that it takes a while to get up to speed on naviants, on how the colleges really want this information, or the transcripts, or whatever communication and information. And it would reflect very well on our students if we have good communication back from someone experienced in that position. So I hope that you will be able to consider that, and speak only a little bit selfishly here, and that my daughter will be a senior next year and going through a lot of those procedures, process of admission involving the Guidance Department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move into the superintendent evaluation, and I'm going to ask Mrs. Borowski to go over her summative evaluation of all the committee members.
Absolutely.
Different evaluations.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Would you mind if I adjusted my chair to this end, just so I have a little bit better visibility?
Thank you.
I think you're going to find adequate space for this. This would be the literal worst, all facing one way. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The purpose for tonight is to go through the annual school committee evaluation of the superintendent. Before I start that, I thought it would be wise, if there's anybody listening to this who's unfamiliar with how superintendent evaluation works in Massachusetts, to very briefly go over the process. And then I also was charged with the task of reading each of our individual evaluations and combining them, as our chair said, into one summative evaluation. And I feel I owe it to my colleagues and certainly to Dr. Doherty to explain how I approached that. So I'll talk about those two, and then we'll dive in. Is that okay?
And I guess I can just say, we appreciate that you read through all of our documents.
Thank you. Thank you. No worries. So Dr. Doherty began this process over a month ago, when he shared with the committee and the public the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Evaluation Form. That form is used across the Commonwealth by school committees to evaluate superintendents. So what we do in writing is very consistent with what's done across the state. We each individually and independently complete an evaluation, which is then published. It's in the packet tonight. It's on the website. It's fully transparent. Any member of the community can see what each committee member, how we evaluated the superintendent. However, Dussie recognizes, and it is true, that Dr. Doherty cannot possibly answer to six different managers. It would be impossible, and it would also be organizationally dysfunctional. There has to be some mechanism to create one evaluation that represents the committee's overall feelings. So our process this year was the same as it's been for several years. One school committee member was appointed, in this case, me, to take the six evaluations, read them, and put them into one summative evaluation. So anyone who's read this is familiar with it. There's sort of two sections to the evaluation tool. There's the goals, so a list of Dr. Doherty's three-year goals and rankings of his progress towards achieving those goals. And then there are four areas of, I call them professional attributes. The document has a different name, performance standard indicators. I like professional attributes, I'll say that. But these are the qualities that the state has determined are the qualities that successful and how the functioning superintendents have. And the school committee members each individually ranked Dr. Doherty. And if anyone has seen these, we all provided significant comments as well. So my process on the rankings is actually straightforward and very easy, and I owe a debt of gratitude to Mrs. Webb. Up until last year, this was her job on the committee. I took it over last year. And she explained to me her process, which I followed faithfully. I think it's the right process. She assigned a numerical value to each ranking. So let's say there's an attribute or a goal, and there are four categories: needs improvement, unsatisfactory, needs improvement, met, exceeded. You just give it a number, 1, 2, 3, 4, create an Excel spreadsheet, name of each school committee member, whatever the numerical value of that ranking is, divided by the number of school committee members, and that's the average. So the rankings is actually very straightforward. There's really no subjectivity in it. So that was the approach I used last year and this year. So thank you, Mrs. Webb, for sharing that thought with me. I will at this point say that one school committee member, Ms. Vandenacker, who is our junior, most junior member, opted to not provide rankings. She provided very significant comments in her evaluation, but because of her newness to the committee made the determination she wouldn't do rankings. So the rankings were all calculated by dividing by five, the five members who gave rankings. The comments are harder nut to crack. There were significant comments really covering the gamut. What I attempted to do, and I did put a lot of effort into it, was try to assess out what were the common themes, what were the things that emerged again and again. So I tried, in the summative evaluation, to do that. So that was my process. Maybe before I move forward, any questions on the process, concerns?
I just wanted to add, Ms. Borowski, that a part of the individual process that we each have is that we each do the evaluation based on the information that's provided by Dr. Doherty and on our personal experience, and we each individually meet with Dr. Doherty. And I think this is a very valuable part of our process, as is my experience in the private sector doing performance review. The most important part is having that discussion. And so it does enable each of us to have that opportunity, to have that discussion with Dr. Doherty, provide the feedback. And we do that, and then subsequent to that meeting, we would finalize our own individual assessment. And then we individually send that to Ms. Borowski and Dr. Doherty and no other member of the committee. So I just want to emphasize that none of us, no single member of the committee sees any other committee member's evaluation until this packet is published by Mrs. Angelson.
Which is at the same time as posted to the website. We get it at the same time the public gets it.
So exactly. And that's been our process for as many years as I can recall, and having been on the committee when we started this process with superintendents continuing.
Thank you, Mrs. Webb. Dr. Doherty, I'd like to commend you on what is a very strong performance evaluation. I'll start with the goals. Your goals for this year were professional practice, student learning goals, and then district improvement goals, which you broke down into closing the achievement gap, literacy, math practices, and social-emotional learning. Across the board, the committee feels that you've made significant progress, and many of us cited some real headwinds this year and some real challenges. So to make significant progress towards your goals in the environment we've been in the last couple of years is impressive. Indicators. Standard one is instruction. The school committee ranked you proficient overall in every indicator, except for one where you were ranked exemplary. The committee was particularly impressed with curriculum improvements, the plan to hire two curriculum coordinators, our strong partnership with Arcasa, and the middle school advisory model. And I do want to point out that the exemplary rating was on data-informed decision-making. Many of us have been very impressed over the last year with the presentations from a variety of administrators and yourself across the district at how data-rich the presentations were. So that earned an exemplary mark and an overall rating of proficient. In this category, several members of the committee did express deep concerns about the findings of the Office of the Civil Rights that IEPs several years ago were not completely compiled with. So we do want to take this opportunity to express that our expectation is 100% compliance with IEPs and all federal mandates and laws moving forward. And there is also a desire to see pacing charts and curriculum maps and have some more clarity around when we can expect to see those in the future. Standard number two is management and operations. In this category, Dr. Doherty, you earned proficient rankings right down the board for all of the categories, creating a safe environment for students, human resource management, scheduling and management information systems, your understanding of law, ethics and policies, and fiscal systems. The school committee commends you for your strong hiring practices and outcomes. And I'll pause here and say, you just announced a new principal at Barrows. Several of us were at the open-mic night. And you're exactly right when you say you brought forward, the screening committee brought forward five very strong candidates. I was there, and I was utterly impressed by the quality of candidates. And that is not the first time I've had that experience. So our hiring process is really... I've had that experience. So our hiring process is really exemplary, and you deserve a lot of credit for developing it and maintaining it. The development of intervention blocks in all of our schools, creating time for more individualized instruction, whether it's students with special needs or gaps that need specialized instruction, or students who need enrichment and to be pushed a little bit. So creating that time for that individualized education is very much appreciated. And it was unanimous. All six of us specifically mentioned your leadership during the last budget process, the development of two distinct budgets. One was a balanced budget in the event that an override did not pass, and one was the reconstruction budget in the event that the override did pass. Again, there was unanimity on the committee that your clarity of budget presentation, the clarity around the outcome of either vote, and your collaboration with the municipal leadership and town leadership across the board, was a critical part of the recipe that led us to fiscal stability for the next several years. Performance standard number three, family and community engagement. There was unanimous agreement that your visibility in one-way communication efforts, blog posts, newsletter emails, visibility at events, presentations to this committee and in other venues are excellent. We appreciate your commitment to office hours, to providing opportunities for the public to meet with you and ask questions, provide feedback and raise concerns. We really see no room for improvement in this area. And several mentioned that they're happy to see the PRAID survey that includes feedback from parents as well as staff. And several committee members, there was some challenge around kindergarten placement this year, but many can, many committee members felt that the final resolution was educationally appropriate, reflected a very collaborative approach. So, a lot of us are very satisfied with the outcome there. That being said, this is the area the committee would like to see you focus on most in the upcoming year. We'd like to see a higher level of sensitivity and interaction with parents in the community, approaching emotional and difficult topics with a little more equanimity, especially when things become emotional and heightened. There was concern about the miscommunication, the initial miscommunication around kindergarten placement, and a desire to ensure that that type of miscommunication not happen again, so we don't have to fix it. And several of us expressed concern about the general social media environment and recognize that that is creating some additional challenges to quality communication. So that, that came up in several of the evaluations. And finally, on professional culture, there was only one area for needs improvement here, and that was managing conflict. And that gets to some of what I was talking about before. Really like to see that be an area of focus for you moving forward. In all other areas, except for one, you were rated proficient. You earn high marks for establishing a professional culture in our district. Your work ethic is unparalleled. I believe all six of us said that. I literally do not think you could work harder. And that is not true in most districts. We're very lucky to have someone who works as hard as you do at your job. And your commitment to our students is evident in everything that you do. It's clear that you enjoy working directly with students, and that's something we very much appreciate. And your love of education is abundantly clear. You were described by several members of the committee as receptive to feedback, reflective, and open to change. The only thing I will add is the one area that you weren't ranked proficient in, in this one, as I mentioned earlier, was in continuous learning, where you were ranked exemplary. You really do lead by example in the area of continuous learning and encouraging and modeling for your staff how to always be growing and always be learning. To sum up, we want to thank you for your critical leadership role during the budget process, the important curriculum updates and improvement across the district, exemplary hiring processes, sustained increase in the percentage of students accessing higher-level math, your leadership in social emotional learning. I reported out earlier on a seminar I was at, and it was just abundantly clear that we're ahead of the curve on this because of work you initiated four years ago. Thoughtful, thorough response to the disturbing bias incidents that we've experienced over the last year, your commitment to data-informed decision-making, and the professional development you offer for staff. We certainly hope that you can use this evaluation as an opportunity for reflection and growth. That's what our intention is. And I, I think that's all. I know I went through that kind of fast, but I believe, Dr. Doherty, we've all had time to read it. So, do you have any questions or comments for me or the committee?
I'll have some, I'll make a statement.
Yeah. So, thank you, Gene. I know it's a lot of, a lot of work, and a lot of information to pull together. Appreciate.
Of course.
So, you know, the committee has had an opportunity, obviously, in a written evaluation. Does anyone have to, and has also met with the superintendent. Does anyone have an additional comments they'd like to make regarding their evaluation? Did you have...
I just want to, I'm not going to read my, what I had prepared, but I just wanted to say, on my evaluation sheet, evaluation sheet, for some reason, my overall view didn't show. I think maybe because I had highlighted it in yellow. So it was supposed to be significant progress.
Okay.
On my sheet. But I won't go into the rest. Thank you. You did such a good job. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Borowski?
So, I have some comment for the superintendent, and then I'll stop there, and then I have a comment for the committee, since we don't get to deliberate before tonight. So, after reading other people's comments, I have some questions just for our committee. For the superintendent, one thing I did want to highlight is, is that, you know, Gene did make a summative remark about what I'll call demeanor, Dr. Doherty. And this is an area where, in my evaluation last year, I had specifically noted, as a development area, handling conflict and some personal experiences I had had. I wanted to say, for the committee and for the superintendent, I've seen marked improvement in this area in personal interactions with the superintendent this year. I, I haven't stopped having disagreements with the superintendent, but I feel that they've been handled very professionally this year, and I want to thank him for that. I feel that, you know, we've both been able to express our perspectives. I feel I learned a lot from those discussions, Dr. Doherty. And I want to commend you in interactions with me this past year in an area, and I noted that in one line in my, in my comments. And I think if it, if it can improve in any one area, I think it can, you know, improve universally, that this is a very valuable data point for us to build off of, and that, you know, I know there's a variety of stakeholders in the schools. So I appreciate your continued commitment to do, do for everyone what I saw you do in our interactions this year, and I really appreciated that. So, my comment on that.
Okay. Anyone else? Dr. Doherty, do you have something?
Yes, thank you. First of all, Ms. Borowski, thank you very much for the work that you did. Having, in continuing to do many, many evaluations using this process, I know how time-consuming it can be. I also want to thank the committee, and I think I've told each of you individually when we had our meetings, that I would not have wanted to do my evaluation this year. So I really appreciate the time and effort that each of you have put into this, and that you took it very seriously, and the thoroughness that you put into it. I really appreciate that. I agree with what Ms. Borowski said in terms that this should be looked upon as a growth process. And I will take all of the areas that I need to strengthen, and there were several that I listed here, including the OCR complaints, the curriculum maps, the two-way communication. We need to, I need to do a better job with the kindergarten communication next year, working with parents on sensitive and emotional topics, and managing conflict. Those were the pieces that I took away from the, the commonalities among all of the evaluations when I, when I went through them. So, I certainly will incorporate those as part of my individual goals next year with the committee, and, you know, come up with ways to improve in those areas. I, I also, just to give a brief, this has probably been the most unusual year that I've had as an educator. There have been highs and there have been lows, but there really hasn't been a lot of in-betweens. And it just seems like that's how this year has gone. From the graffiti incidents that began last spring and continued through the summer, to, which was a low, to the passing of the override, which is a high. There has been, there has been a lot of things that have happened in this district this year. And, obviously, we've, we've done everything we can to keep, keep everybody moving in the right direction and moving forward. But I, I do want to give a special thank you to the people that have been working as a team with me and staff. I want to thank all of our building principals who have been, I know we're very visible during the budget process at our meetings. I want to thank Carolyn Wilson, our Director of Student Services, who I know has got a very difficult job, and certainly Gail Dowd for all the work that she did during the budget process this year with the two budgets that you mentioned. And on top of that, all of the other little jobs that we've had to do for various reasons, whether someone's been out for a while, or whatever the case may be, we've, we've really had to pick up the pieces. So, I just want to give a special thank you to all of the people that have worked with me in the continuing to move our district forward, even with all of these challenging times that we have faced. And, you know, you, you mentioned that this is a very positive evaluation. You can't do this by yourself. You need, you need strong people, dedicated people, hard-working people to make this happen. And I, I show my appreciation to those people.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Borowski?
I, I thank you for that feedback. And I, I think that your approach, in specifically highlighting the areas of, that you would like to work on developing, is really modeling for everyone how to take that. So I appreciate that. But I do want to emphasize that a level of proficiency is highly rigorous in the state of Massachusetts. It's a very solid, solid review. And it's clear to me that you continue to have the support and appreciation of this committee. So, it's maybe a nicer place to end on, and I appreciate your receptiveness.
Mrs. Webb?
I'm going to put the motion on the table for us. Move to approve the superintendent's End of Cycle Summative Evaluation Report for the 2017-2018 school year.
Any discussion, any, yes?
I wanted to talk to the committee about it.
Any...
Do you need your second?
Yeah. Sorry, I thought you seconded.
Second, sure.
Go ahead.
Okay. I had some, after reading the reviews, I had a few comments for, for the committee, which I can't make other than an open meeting. So, just a few points. I have a few points about the structure of the goals that I wanted for thinking about the future, because I wrote this evaluation with respect to the goals. I had some differences with the committee on the goals. I voted against the goals, and, but I voted, I evaluated based on the goals in spite of that. So I wanted to speak to that first. There's some areas where I think we, as a committee, are lacking in information for, and that we may want to seek more information in the future. It just wasn't available to us this time. And then I had some comments on overall performance test scores. So, those three areas. If people want to talk about these now, that's fine. If they want to just save it for later, that's fine, too. So, I have four concerns with these goals, the way they're structured. Three of them all relate to the being multi-year goals. So I'm opposed to having any multi-year goal for a committee where every year that two of the six of us are on the ballot for election, or our seats are up on the ballot. So we have three-year goals. I think we're in year two of three, if I'm right. I know that the committee can change those goals at any point. They have the power to do that. But if, if we're going to have multi-year goals at a minimum, I would want to see clear indication of exactly what is to be accomplished at each of the years. But as a general rule, I'm opposed to them categorically for, for these three reasons. The first is that each committee should be able to set the goals for the superintendent for the year they're going to evaluate. And every year, there's the opportunity to have different members of the committee. So it's by having, by coming into the committee, as, as some of us did with the goals kind of preset by a prior committee, we're in the position of either having to change an expectation that the superintendent has been given based on a multi-year goal, right, which we can do, but that seems unfair to the superintendent. Or we can go with the flow and just keep the goals and not have as much of a hand in crafting them as we otherwise would. So I see it as a reach forward by a committee into future committees' affairs that I don't think we have, should be able to do. We can, but I don't think we should. Secondly, circumstances change. I mean, since these goals were passed, we had a number of budget cuts. We had a failed override. We had a successful override. There's been real changes in our budgetary circumstances as a committee since these goals were put on paper. And I think if you, anytime you do multi-year goals, you're, you're beholden to somewhat unforeseeable and unknowable circumstances. You know, I think want to draft goals with the idea of taking into account the circumstances of the district, financial and otherwise, when you make the goals. Third, I think when you create a temptation to kick the can down the road when you have a multi-year goal. So if you have a three-year goal, and, I don't know, a quarter of it gets done in the first year, you can say, well, we'll make it up next year. Or, until that final year, you always have the ability to say, well, you know, we'll get to it next year. And then you can end up getting to that last year and having so much to do that it's not realistic to get it all done. So it can be self-frustrating.
Can I ask you a question?
Of course.
So, what, so there are, are some things that, that we couldn't do in a year, right? I mean, so, how do we, this, how do we, how would we address that? Would, in another, another mechanism? Or what are your thoughts on...
I would just re-up the goal year over year. You just rewrite it. So, so let me give an example, and then we can go to other comments. But, so, if, if your goal is, I think that every goal should be specific, measurable, actionable, you know, smart goals. I forget what the R is for.
Realistic.
Realistic. Right, going to my point about circumstances. Well, they are time-bound. You have three years to do them, so I really can't worry about the T. But the SMA, and SMA is what I'm worried about, the R. You know, I think year by year, you can make better goals. So I would say, so let's say you have a goal of improving elementary school literacy assessments. You could set a goal the first year, if we want 100% Fontas-Pennell evaluation on our elementary schools by the end of this year. Depending on what those results look like, you can then set a goal that's appropriate for, we want this, we have this percent on this evaluation this year among our elementary school students. We want it to be this, this much higher in one year. And then if you achieve some of that, but not all of it, to your point, then you said, we want it to be this much higher, or we want it to be the same, or not go down. So I, I think you, you can just recapitulate the goals as you need to and update them with more realistic benchmarks.
You just give levels of, levels of completion in each year. Isn't that kind of...
You would just have a smaller scope, and, and, but you would always have to have a specific and measurable outcome. I struggle to see specific measurable outcomes in the professional practice, student learning, and district improvement goals that we had to evaluate on. I think they're, they're highly subjective, process-driven. And it was, you know, I, I had to take them as they were when I felt, filled out my evaluation, and I was faithful to the wording of the goal. But I had some strong disagreements with this committee and how they were worded.
Yes.
So, I think that, that smart goals are a good idea. I just would, there are many things that it, there is a longer term. Like, there's no curriculum implementation that gets done in one year, right? Like, so the no atom implementation, right, we, that's structured as three years. So, I think we have to be cognizant that there are things that are going to span longer time periods, and we need to establish what those goals are, you know, within each, say, year period or evaluation cycle. So I agree with that. But I'm very, you know, and I think these, the goals are structured that way. That's part of the superintendent process for the state. So, we would want to, I think, look at it very carefully if we're departing from the standards for the state. And I also just really, it concerns me that we, we are elected political committees. As you point out, we can change, you know, every year. And you want to make sure that, again, that if there's long-term goals, we continue, we can achieve those as a district and not have the case where, you know, one committee, we do this, and we don't make any progress because different committees have different perspectives, and we don't, as a district, achieve the longer-term goals. So I think we just need to, you know, to balance that. And also, the, you know, one of the, I know that many other committees, and actually, Mrs. Vandenacker sort of executed this this year. Many committees, unless you are on the board when the goals are set and part of that, you know, that goal-setting meeting, they don't do the evaluation. I think this year, Mrs. Vandenacker chose not to do the rating, but did give the narrative, gave the feedback, which, you know, from her time on the committee, which started in December, I think, right?
Yeah. I was appointed in December.
So, it is a much more difficult position when you come into the board, and it's been after the goals were set. So I, I think it's a dialogue that, something for us to keep in mind as we set the goals for next, next year.
Ms. Borowski?
Yeah, I want to thank you for bringing that to us. It's, it's an interesting point, and I'm kind of processing. I don't have an immediate reaction, going to think about it a little bit. There is one sort of caution I would have if we went down the road of discussing this. And it would be, I'd be a tiny bit worried that if the goals became too specific, they'd become too narrow for a position that's really a CEO-level position. And it's probably just nitpicking the example, but like Fontas and Pennell, implementation of benchmarks for all the elementary, that to me feels like a principal goal. Principal is part of your job this year. We need this assessment done at these grade levels. That doesn't feel like a superintendent goal to me. So, you probably have other examples that I may be more comfortable with, but that would be the one thing that has, I would want to see goals that were broad and district-wide and systemic, and not too narrow. But I think some of your other points are really good, and I'm going to think about them.
Did you have some...
Sure. I, I kind of see, I think I'm in between some of these positions in that I, I agree that taking up something like literacy instruction, that has to be a multi-year goal. It has to be more than three years. But I also do agree that the action steps can be specific. And in fact, even in the superintendent evaluation forms from the state, they say smart goals, and they give some examples of very specific kinds of goals. So, I think that perhaps the goal... So, I think that perhaps the goal might span for several years, but the action steps, year by year, could be more specific, perhaps. Is that, does that get at any of what you were thinking, Mr. White?
Yes.
I just want to let everyone talk, though. I can respond.
I just want to thank you. I, I find it helpful to think critically about the process. I actually like that it's a three-year, because that allows for those other circumstances that we can't anticipate to enter in and not derail the goals. And it is education, not sales. So, it's very hard to say, "Well, sales went up, sales went down." You can't really, doing the quantitative analysis is different in education. We had changes in standardized testing, couldn't really compare them between years. There are a lot of challenges that way. I love that we have the chance for the narrative, and I'm in awe that Mrs. Borowski could reduce it to what she did in such a powerful way, not my forte. But the narrative is a really important part of it. Where I had problems with the evaluation was the lumping in the professional practice. There were like six things in the list, and I often found that five out of those six, I would have given an exemplary to, or a proficient for, and then I'd see the one that gave me trouble, and I wouldn't, in my narrative, I could separate it out, but I couldn't separate it out in my rating. And, so that was very challenging to me. But the three-year span, it's sort of like development with children also, you know, they develop at different rates. We get information that tells us where the superintendent is in the goal, like we do with the school improvement plans, where they say, "X has been done, Y has been done, Z hasn't been done." And I find that really helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? You can respond.
Yeah. Did you have something else?
May I, may I add something to what you said, or something?
Sure.
Or do you want to go now?
Do, go ahead.
Okay, okay. So, you know, paradoxically, the goal that would seem the hardest to measure in a smart way, the social-emotional, is the one that was written in the most kind of smart, you know, stereotypically smart way, with, with specific steps. That's interesting. I'm an English professor, so I'm not huge on data and numbers. I think, I mean, I believe in data informed, not data-driven, but even looking at these, you know, it's outcome-based. What is the, at the end of three years, and then move backwards. And there are ways to be specific without locking yourself in, or turning people into robots, I think. Not turning teachers into robots, kids into robots, and responding to the changing conditions. So, I do feel like we can find ways to be flexible yet specific, personally.
Yes.
You have anything?
Nothing else.
Nobody recognizes you?
We covered it all, huh?
No, I want to thank the committee, I wanted to hear everybody's thoughts, and I appreciate-
I started it, by saying, asking about the three years versus one year.
Okay. So, I want to thank the committee voters. I think there's a difference, so listening to your perspectives, I mean, I think there's a difference between a vision, priorities, and a mission statement versus goals. I still, nothing I've heard would change my view that, as a committee, we should be, we're called on by law to evaluate on an annual cycle. And so I think that if, if we do want to retain a multi-year approach, I'd like to see some more specific benchmarks, guideposts, what have you, that are objective for the superintendent's benefit, the public's benefit, as well as our own, right? That when we, you know, go to the process of independently evaluating based on a set of written goals, I'd like there to be more specific benchmarks that we expect each year, and we can all align around our views on whether those were achieved. The math curriculum that was brought up, Ms. Webb, in your comments, was a good example, I think, of how we've approached a multi-year goal in one-year increments. So we've multiple times gone to the voters and asked for separate tranches, three separate tranches of 150K each.
Science.
I'm science, I'm sorry.
No add-on, yeah.
No add-on, was science, I misspoke, but the science curriculum. So that's an example of, it's a three-year curriculum update, and we broke it down into three pieces, and we implemented them in three individual pieces. And we were accountable with, you know, Ms. Dowd, to provide the public with, you did a remarkable job, you were within a couple pennies. I think to the penny, she had an accountability of exactly how that taxpayer money was spent. So it's doable, and that's an excellent example of how we've done it. And what I'm asking is to take the same approach, not always monetary, but the same approach to all of our evaluations. And I think, for me, I would have a lot more comfort participating in the process if the annual benchmarks were a little more clear and agreed upon. The second area, I have, I have comments. Just areas that I'd like more info personally, but I don't know that it's available. I'd like to know, I know that we're starting a pride survey, I'd really like to look at periodically obtaining data about for, for teachers and staff, how do we find out how they view how well they're resourced? And we talk in this committee a lot about, you know, budget, we talk about resources that, you know, we have to trade against each other in our, in our budget deliberation in January and February. We have what I view as sporadic information on the effectiveness of teacher training and professional development. I'd like to know more, for instance, when we collapsed the levels, SCP, CP, in the high school, and elementary schools, or I'm sorry, middle schools. You know, do we have the right kind of support for differentiated instructions for those students? And how do we assess whether it's the right support? I'd like to, in some kind of a systematic way, hear, hear feedback from the people doing the work with our students. We have 500, 550 FTE employed in our district toward, you know, student learning. That's a wealth of knowledge and wisdom that, I think, at a high level, if there was some way to get feedback in a way that was legally appropriate and anonymous, and kind of organized in a way that we could provide both the superintendent with a resource and us with some guidance, I would appreciate it. So are teachers spread too thin? You know, I ask myself that question. So I'd like some feedback on that, to the extent we don't already have it.
Dr. Darty, you got your hand?
I was just going to say, the pride survey has questions around that.
Which is excellent.
It's part of the school climate.
So we look, I look forward to seeing that. Last, last question, last topic, just test scores, right? So my concern, you know, I've highlighted in my evaluation is, you know, on the one hand, there's a, a situation that we have focused on quite a while with one of our elementary schools, where a subpopulation tested in a certain way for four consecutive years, several years ago. In addition to that, when you look at all of our elementary schools, I see a difference between how different populations in our schools perform on these tests compared to the peer communities we've chosen. I highlighted that in my evaluation. I also see a difference between how Reading students are performing now on the tests that they take, and I know we've had three tests in three years, right? We had MCAS I on Park, and then MCAS II. You can't compare them to each other.
Right.
And I'm absolutely not saying that the test scores are the focal point, or should be a focal point of, that detracts from looking for what's best for students overall. I'm supportive of the MTSS process of providing Level II and III supports. But we don't talk a lot about test scores in this committee, and I don't want to miss that as a component of what we are assessed on, whether we like them or not. They're, they're a fact of life, they're legally required, and I wonder why, why do our students perform a certain way relative to their peers today in 2018, and when we look at the same grade levels five and 10 years ago, I often see differences, and sometimes not, often unfavorable differences. And I wonder when I see that, you know, and I don't know why that is, but I do see that, you know, we've been talking about curriculum and pacing charts and implementing curriculum for quite some time here. And I have to wonder whether our students are being taught the same thing at the same pace that other students are being taught in other places within the state. I don't know the answer. But we're investing a lot as a committee and as a town. We've hired a new assistant superintendent, we have invested an additional 150K of override money into curriculum, and then we have a number of curriculum items in our budget every year. So we're investing a great deal in curriculum to make sure our students are getting the best possible education, education that's aligned with how, you know, the state chooses to assess them in part. So I want to make sure that we have agenda topics as a committee that creates an environment where we can have a conversation with our administrators and with our principals and administrators about, you know, how's it going? Do you have the resources you need? Are we, are we on track? What is our goal? And I would love to see that as a smart goal. But I think that if this committee chooses to look at something, I think we have the ability to influence how, what people prioritize, in part. And so I want to use that function of our committee to look at curriculum in the upcoming year. I think that's very important. So those are my comments. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Anyone from, did you have any?
No.
I don't have any specific questions, but I did want to thank the committee for their, their work and all of their comments and the narratives that it was an evaluation, and I agree with the comments here, to make up the double budgets to work against the headwinds in social media. Definitely a challenging year, and I look forward to next year when we don't have the budget processes making some progress on some things that have been persistent problems, at least persistent complaints about certain areas in the district. So, look forward to things next year.
Thank you. Okay. Sure, absolutely.
I just wanted to follow up on what Nick said. I appreciate the idea of focusing a little bit, some energy on test scores, because something that's been bothering me is the goal of closing the achievement gap, because you can do that by bringing everyone down, but bringing the high-needs subgroup down less. That reduces the achievement gap, but not in a way that anyone would want. So, what we want to be doing is raising achievement for all. That was one comment. And the other comment I had related to the multi-year goals and curriculum is, could we say that in this one year, we are going to accomplish, we're going to have published math curriculum maps for, and pacing guides for grades X to Y, and that's a measurable goal, and you either meet it or you don't. Just thoughts? Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We have the motion?
Yep, the motion is actually on the table, and it's been seconded to approve the superintendent's end-of-cycle summative evaluation report for 2017-2018.
Is there, who we already seconded? All those in favor? Six, zero. Thank you. So, we are now, go, go ahead, you can read it.
Yep. So, we are going to be moving into executive session to protect the bargaining position of the board. We will move into executive session to discuss strategies with respect to collective bargaining and non-represented personnel, specifically the superintendent's contract and compensation, and the approval of minutes, and we will return to open session at, well, I'm going to say nine o'clock. Is that right? We, at approximately nine o'clock, we would plan to return to open session.
This requires a roll call vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you.
For everyone's patience, it went longer than we had indicated, but we went into executive session. So, the committee has voted a salary for the superintendent for the 2000 fiscal year beginning June 30th, 2018 to 19. Is that right?
July 1st.
July 1st. Wait.
I'll make the motion, move to approve the superintendent's salary increase of 2%, which is an annual amount of 186,728 for the 2018-19 school year.
So, a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any other motions?
No.
Okay. No motion to adjourn?
We have to vote?
Do we have to vote?
You have to vote.
We have to vote.
We just, oh.
We have to actually do the vote in public.
With hands, or a roll call?
Oh, I thought we, yeah, would.
Is that, is that correct, or are we just reporting?
Yeah, yeah, we do.
You have to vote in public session?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All those? Any other discussion? All those in favor? Four opposed, two?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Two? All those in favor? Opposed?
I'm attempting to vote.